I'd like to call to order the February 13th regular meeting of the Fall Over School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have a few people for citizens' input tonight. Melissa Bragger, Manchester Street, Fall River.
Good evening. I have some pictures here that I need you guys to look at.
Just leave them on the podium, we'll bring them up after, Melissa.
Okay.
I'll give them to Kenny if you want.
Right behind you. Okay, I'm here to tell you that I have a lot of frustration. I am the owner and president of Bragger Transportation. There's multiple times and sources that Amaro Bus Company has used a Rhode Island bus, which is totally illegal. I've reached out to multiple people to tell them what was going on. I tell them to go and see, they call them, they tell them, he just moves it to a different school. This is not the only city that he's doing it at, he's doing it in other towns. He's basically out to put me out of business, per se. And when, you know, when you do the contract and they give you this thing where you list the buses that you're going to use for Fall Over Public, he has seven of them listed here that belongs to Westport School, three of them, five of them that belong to Bristol Aggie School. So the buses that he listed in 2020, or 2022, whatever this is, that he put down as being used for Fall Over Public, he's not using them. You know, he's non-performing performance, he's doing what he should, can to get the kids to school, he's not using the right buses. You'll see a bus in the pictures that says 908, that's an '09. The way Mr. Amaral mocks his buses is the year. So if it's 908, that's an '09 bus, but the eighth one bore. If you look at the paper, and I can give you this too, but it's in the contract, where he lists 2019, 18, and 15, you'll see the first number of every one of the bus is the year of the bus. You know, I tell people all the time, he's not using it. I got an excuse of, oh, we had COVID, so we're giving them until December. This is now February of 2023. Is he gonna finish the contract with '09s? They're more than 10 years old. So I'm just wondering, you know, what's gonna be done about it? I was told he was gonna be fined on a Thursday, on a Friday, that he was gonna be, he was told on Thursday not to use the bus no again, again, and I was talking to somebody and I told them, I'm following a bus right now, and sent them the picture that you'll see, which is on that Monday. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Colin Dias, Bray Street, Fall River.
Good afternoon, members of the school committee, and before I begin, thank you to the last person who spoke, and I hope the school committee, in its due diligence, looks into this issue. It's, we need to make sure our laws are followed, definitely, and it's something I'm curious in myself. But going on, the last time I spoke before this body, I believe we were debating sending city taxpayer funds to organizations such as the JRC, and we actually heard members on this committee defend their vote, saying they were voting yes, actually gonna vote yes for the taxpayers. I was also very disappointed that members of this committee and members of the department discussed DCF potentially suing us, and they discussed this in open session. That's inappropriate. I think that puts the school district at a legal risk, and that's something our taxpayers don't deserve. You can't use this lawyer card only, like we did with the former superintendent, only when it benefits your argument, and then disregard it when it doesn't benefit your argument. And I do expect the gavel to come down next time there is discussions of legal matters. That's something that shouldn't be discussed in open session. And we also, I think, believe, I believe we need to amend our rules to assure that not one department head can bind, basically bind the city into a contract without superintendent or school committee approval. And I believe we need to set our priorities straight in this school district. And when our school district is ranked 335th out of 351 school districts in this Commonwealth, I have to say this, to the everyday taxpayer, renter, homeowner, watching this meeting at home, you can count on me and others to make sure that this school committee uses tax dollars, taxpayer dollars, to directly benefit only education of Fall Over students, not one dime for anything else. Not the JRC, not administrative salaries, not privileged hiring, but to teachers, paraprofessionals, and everyday workers in this school district. I believe this year, and it's something I really wanna talk about this year, and it's something, it's a road to district before, probably before I was born, is privileged hiring. For decades, you should be selected to work in this school district, and I know the superintendent, I know the school district's putting a lot of good effort into the hiring of new teachers and paraprofessionals, which is great. General comment, I believe you should be hired in this district based on what you know, and not who you know. And I just really quickly have a question, I saw the NAGO auditorium was on the agenda for tonight, and again, I'm all for using, finding a good, appropriate use for this building. My one question is, if we allow EMS to occupy the auditorium, will that prevent any performing arts, maybe from DIRFI or another organization, from using the building while EMS occupies that building? And I just hope someone can ask that question when it comes up on the agenda, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlie Chase, North Main Street, Fall River.
I don't know whether to say good evening or good afternoon, but I wanna give my greetings to the board and to the people who have showed up here. I've been very remiss in not coming to these meetings since I came to the city 30 some odd years ago. I just wanted to introduce myself as Charlie Chase, someone who has for about 45 years taught mostly at college level, but some at high school, including one year that I was over here. I have a few concerns about what's going on around the country and right here. I assume that it is the same, I hope not. I see many school districts that are deciding that the school is the proper place for upbringing the students. I do not believe in that, I think the parents are the people who upbring the students. I've been told by certain officials that many of the parents, they're on some program or something like that, and they could care less about what's happening with the kids. I don't think this is absolutely true, I think this is something that's being brought on people if that is occurring. And I think it's the school's responsibility to help to make it so that the parents have more input into the school, not just PTA, but have more input individually. Along with that, I feel that the parents should have the right to know what the students are learning and how they are learning it, so they can help them at home. I've had many complaints, I did a survey on this about a couple of years ago, and the top two things were parental rights and giving the parents the right to learn what the kids are learning in school and how to do it. Because, for example, with math, many of them were completely frustrated by that, they cannot understand the new methods of doing mathematics and such. The last item is regarding sex education, connected with the libraries. Books that are, have been said to be improved by making them more woke and, you know, doing away with certain words or certain actions, things that have happened in the past. If we don't have, understand what the past was, and I'm sure any educators here would know this, if we don't understand what has happened in the past, then we are going to repeat it again in the future. We need that there, not because it's good, but as a guideline for helping us to figure out how we can make this a better school district and a better country. That's about all I have to say today. I apologize for not coming to former meetings, but I will be coming in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, Jeff Gudrow, Palmer Street, Fall River.
Hello, members of the school committee. I want to go on record to state I disapprove of the treachery to the taxpayers and the students of this district for the vote to send taxpayer money to the Judge Rottenberg Center. And let me tell you that that place is rotten. I also wish to go on record to state I am against privileged hiring in the school district, and that this school committee should take steps to combat privileged hiring. We should hire those based on what they know, not who they know. I hope the school committee can take a vote to condemn the Judge Rottenberg Center. That is something that is extremely important to me. I am happy the school committee finally has line item budgeting. It is time we cut down on these administrative salaries and get more support to the educators and mental health support. Sincerely, Judge Jeffrey Gudrow, 229 Palmer Street.
Thank you, Deb. Recognition awards, we have none tonight. We have a few subcommittee reports. Item number four, Special Education, Alternative Education Subcommittee notes. Who's gonna address that? Mr. Aguirre, please.
Thank you very much. We did have a very successful subcommittee meeting. We talked about the strategic plan, which has been in place for a few years, and how we're gonna be moving to get the next strategic plan up and running. Mrs. Obenchain was there for her first meeting, was very cordial, she was prepared. We all seemed to be working on the same page, looking at the data, looking at what, how our meetings are gonna run for the rest of the year, at least quarterly, so I really think it was a good first step in our meeting. The committee members asked a lot of pertinent questions, and we're awaiting information as we go forward with the budget and to see where we're gonna go. So I really thought the Special Education Committee did very well. The alternative piece of that meeting didn't happen, this was specifically for special education. The Alternative Education meeting will be in early March, that's a quarterly meeting as well. So I thought it went very well, and it was a pleasure to have Ms. Obenchain there for the first time, so thank you, and Mrs. Ponce for your cooperation, appreciate it.
Next, the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee Meeting Notes.
That's me.
Ms. Roderick's?
So we met a couple of weeks ago and had revisited what our goals were in terms of what we wanted to see happen in the district, in terms of family engagement. We had spent some time talking about the parent square rollout and how that's really been a positive aspect to get parents more connected to what's happening in their schools. We talked a little bit about the power school rollout for parents, so parents are able to access student information that way. That has, at least anecdotally, resulted in some increased parent connection at the middle school and high school levels, and we're looking at elementary school next. We spent some time talking about the community facilitator roles and how consistently we've received positive feedback about that, that particular position. There's been some consistent staff development and training around that role, so that way all schools are able to access the same quality of care provided by those folks. We do still have three schools that do not have a community facilitator, but we're working, we're working on that. We also talked about the SEL liaison positions and how the focus has really been at the middle school and high school levels. Those have been really well received. Those connections are really promoting healthy relationships, and we know that that supports more positive behaviors, we know that that supports appropriate decision-making across the board, and it also improves our academics and better attendance, and really, that's our goal, is to get kids in the building, in school, and they're not gonna do that unless they feel connected to folks. So that's been a huge help. Speaking of attendance, we are moving slowly in the right direction. We are talking, or we have reestablished the attendance task force with some intentionality, so that way you can really hone in on what the barriers are to getting kids in the building every day. And we did talk about how the attendance cars are being used more consistently to get kids to school. And then lastly, we had focused on community engagement, we continue to work with community partners, but now, I think moving forward, the goal is really looking at that after-school time and that early evening time to support our kids, because, you know, we have our kids for a portion of the day, but the community has them the rest of the day. And that's, it was a good meeting, hoping that we can meet again shortly and kind of look at where we're at, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Roderick. Instructional Subcommittee, Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Instructional Subcommittee met this past Monday at Spencer Warden, there were four items on the agenda. First one was Mr. Demarest and his team presented and previewed the DIRFI Program of Studies. The vote was unanimous, we went over everything, vote was unanimous to send it to the full committee tonight. Dr. Curly and her department heads gave a really good review of the assessment data, the local assessment data. The assessment data is in a PDF and was provided to the whole school committee this past Friday, so everybody should have gotten that. Also had a discussion on the curriculum pilot and the proposed adoption timeline, that's also in your email, I believe. And the last discussion was the school improvement plans and district improvement plans, which will be discussed tonight. It was a, it was a good meeting, it was an informal meeting, the only thing going to a vote tonight is the, I believe it's the DIRFI Program of Studies. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Larrabee. Item number five, the superintendent's report, we have a couple of items that Superintendent Ponce would like to discuss with us, so go ahead, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that it's important, just last week, one week ago, it's hard to believe, but we had a significant storm that impacted some of our schools. I thought it would be an opportunity for us to give you an overview of what exactly happened. I know that we are going to follow up with, we don't have cost yet, we're pricing out everything that occurred, as well as repairs, we brought staff in, et cetera, but we had four schools with boiler issues already, so Mr. Monas and Angel Borges, who is the supervisor for custodians, came up with a plan to be checking on schools. We had, because of the cold, we had asked custodians, the senior custodians, to go into schools in the morning, and then in the evening to check the heat, to check every space, just to make sure everything was running efficiently. Doran, Tanzi, Green, and Henry Lord are the schools we were worried about for boiler issues. Mr. Monas requested that Angel Borges and the custodial, who is the custodial supervisor, to have those schools checked and monitored throughout the entire weekend. Meanwhile, Mr. Monas started checking DIRFI High School out at 4:00 PM, and that's on the Friday, and noticed that the greenhouse, one of the sides blew from the wind. It was very, very windy on Friday night and Saturday. He then got called back to DIRFI around 11:30 PM. Because some alarms were going off, Mr. Monas walked into the cafeteria, noticed that it was very cold, some of those doors, there was a door that had blown open. Roughly around 12 to 1:00 AM in the morning, Mr. Monas got a call to head over to Morton for fire alarm issues. Meanwhile, he got a call from Henry Lord for burglar alarm issues around 1:00 to 1:30. The wind had some impact on that. At approximately 3:00 AM, Mr. Monas got another fire alarm call for CUS, the pole station was down. At approximately 4:30 AM, a fellow fire department was called to DIRFI because the fire alarm had gone off at 5:00 AM, and Dave from ENE was called and asked if he could get into Viveris, which was yet another issue. As you can see, just from that short thing, it was a very, very busy time for Angel Borges and Manny Monas, who's the director of maintenance, they were nonstop from Friday night on. Next, they went around to check schools to make sure everything was okay from 8:00 to 8:30. Mr. Monas, between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning, on Saturday morning, Mr. Monas received a call from the Doran senior custodian to let him know that there was a flood with multiple rooms impacted caused by a UNA vent freezing, a coil from the heating system. Mr. Monas stayed there to isolate the situation until about 4:00 PM. We had custodians come in to help with the cleanup, and they were also working to fix that heating vent. Phone calls were then made, and those folks worked Saturday, and they came back on Sunday also to finish the cleanup over there at Doran, because we weren't sure as to whether we would be ready. Mr. Monas then got a call from Tanzi to take a look at the roof. From there, he had another call for 290 Rock at 6:00 PM that the boiler was frozen, there was some frozen pipes there. He received another call at 8:30 that Viveris had a sprinkler head that let go, and that caused a flood in the cafeteria area and the stage. While there, at 11:30 PM, we received a call from the Green School that another UNA vent had let go and flooded three to four classrooms. It was, the difference between the Green situation and the Doran situation is that the Doran happened on the top floor, which caused water to come down to all the floors, and then the Green was on the bottom floor, so it was those rooms, and then water spilled over to the other rooms. Mr. Monas went back to Henry Lord at 2:00 AM because several alarms were going off. When he was walking in, he noticed that the main office was very, very cold. He discovered five UNA vents that were frozen. He worked to repair them, and then went back to Green to check on the leaking sprinkler head. That was, it was a small leak, but he wanted to isolate that and shut it down because he was afraid that it was going to burst, and he called the fire department to alert them because that's our protocol. On Sunday, Mr. Monas then headed back to Henry Lord to continue to work on some issues there, he was there till 4:00 PM. Then he received a call from Mr. Pacico that the Early Learning Center had a burst pipe. He arrived there at 4:30 and stayed until about 6:30, until that was repaired. Every single one of those issues required custodians to come in. I will say that Mr. Monas and Angel Borges were there the entire time at all those Mr. Pacico and I reported, and they were there through the whole thing. And on Monday morning, Mr. Monas, we started school, we were ready to go, everything was clean, I mean, outstanding job by our custodial staff to get us ready. But on Monday morning, Mr. Monas received a call from the senior custodian at Spencer Warden, that yet another UNA vent steamed out a room, students had to be moved to another classroom in order for that work to happen and for the repair to occur. At every single one of those sites, Angel and Manny were directing their crews, custodians, maintenance work, and really, we were able to open because of their conscientiousness and really dedication, because they worked around the clock.
Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you for the presentation on that. We had heard some of that, the detail was not as great as what you say, what you told us here today, but it goes without saying, in my opinion, that Angel and Manny both worked tirelessly over the weekend. When I looked at some of the contracts and I asked the question today again, that these individuals are on salary.
Right.
And everybody else that works, the men and women that work for them, would be coming in on overtime and they'd be getting compensated as such. And when I look at the salaries that people are getting, usually when you get a salaried employee where it's sort of, everything is included, that person makes the salary a lot higher than what a normal person would be making. And in those two individuals, I don't believe that they do. And I think that the work that they did was an emergency, we were in a crisis, and I'd like to make a motion that we authorize you to pay them the overtime rate as their men and women received for similar work over that entire weekend. Because the money that was saved by what they did, never mind the fact of looking into what maybe some things could have been avoided, but I believe wholeheartedly that they should be paid the rates the same as the men and women that they called in to do the job. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
I would second that.
I have a motion to second, and I had talked to Mr. Aguirre about this. Sometimes with these kind of moves, they end up biting you later. I have no problem giving these people comp time when they're working extra eight-hour shifts. I don't think you can wring people out like this, I don't agree with this, and I think that that would be a much better policy. Let them have a couple of days to go fishing in the summer, let them have, I think, I think when people come in with that kind of a schedule, we should definitely try to make them whole, but at the same time, I think when we negotiate a salaried position, we're not gonna worry about every, every, every situation like this. At the same time, I do wanna acknowledge the work that went on, I was out there, I did see what was going on, I did visit Doran, I did visit Viveris, I did go by Tanzi, and people were doing a yeoman's job. And I would rather see us have a policy across the board that allows people, when they get stuck working extraordinary hours over a weekend, that we acknowledge it and we treat them with respect. Hearing a motion to second.
Oh, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I can appreciate what you're saying, but when you have to, you have to look into the situation to know the salaries. Mr. Monas gets $75,000 a year. We have custodians and maintenance people that work for us, that make more money with their overtime than the gentleman gets paid to work around the clock, have stress and pressure on him like you've never seen, and we have workers that get paid more than the individual who's actually in charge, who Mrs. Ponce just said, for over 48 hours or 72 hours straight, left his family, didn't care about what was going on, he put himself at risk to do what he had to do. He didn't say, oh, I can't go there or call somebody else. The work that she just explained that he did and Ms. Borges did to try to get them, they deserve at least the same amount, and Mrs. Borges makes less money than him. We have a salary problem in this district, and that's the problem. We have to do the research and figure out what do people make and what do they not. We had this debate over principals, that we shouldn't have principals working around the clock and not getting paid accordingly. Here's an opportunity for us to step up and not give somebody comp time, because quite frankly, people like that aren't gonna take the comp time, because they wanna do the job, because they're passionate about it like it's their own house. We need to help these people, they're not asking for this, neither one of those people asked me to make this motion, but it's the right thing to do. So I asked my colleagues to authorize the superintendent to pay them like everybody else was paid that worked underneath them, by yield.
My concern with issues like this, Mr. Aguirre, is you isolate two people over a catastrophic storm. If perchance you wanna go to the Policy Committee with a timeline and ability to rectify the situation, I think that's where it should go.
Who else didn't get paid?
Hold on, I'm not, I did not interrupt you, Mr. Aguirre. I did not interrupt you.
I understand, so please call on me when you're done, I apologize.
Okay. So what I believe is, if that's what you wanna make a motion to do, then I think that that would be the form of a policy, and I don't care if we backdate it, if that's what comes before us, but to do it off the cuff, off the stage, while acknowledging the spectacular work that went on, as I said, I was out there, I saw it, I don't know if anybody else had that opportunity or they were fortunate enough, and I do, I do wanna acknowledge these people. And if that's how the committee decides to vote, then that's, then so be it. But doing it off the stage right now without a policy going forward that will take care of everybody, I just disagree with respectfully. I don't have a problem with a policy that acknowledges work, whether it's comp time or additional stipends, I'm not against that. I do believe people should get paid, but doing it off the cuff like this is not the right way to handle it at this time.
Mr. Aguirre?
So the point I was making was, the salaries are not such. Mrs. Ponce, can you tell me the salaries of each person who was on salary that worked during that weekend that did not get paid because they're on salary?
No, I, well, I, we had principals come in, but other than that, it was all the custodial staff and maintenance staff there.
Right, like I look at it and I say, you, Madam Superintendent, so you are paid salary, you don't get paid overtime.
Right.
But you also get paid $215,000.
It would be $210, but...
$210.
Kevin, you make a motion to give a raise?
The point I'm... The point I'm making is that.
No, you're right.
The folks that, that come in on salary would be your assistant. Mr. Pacheco makes 125,000. Somebody else, like, the salaries, when you're in that range, come with that kind of thing in the territory of, okay, I would normally make like 70. I get overtime, you know, you include that. So this is rational. This is not something that I don't think is irrational. This was a crisis that we didn't anticipate. Coming in one hour or here or there is one thing. But when you describe what you just described, I, I can't find it in good conscience to even let these people work another day without telling them they're going to get paid. And when we look at the other salaries, and I'm not meaning to throw it out, it's public record what everybody gets paid, at the end of the day, we gave those salaries to individuals based on the fact of, you're at 5:00 in the morning answering calls. You're going here, you're going there. That's why the basis is this. I've done the research. I know that there's custodians that make more money, union custodians that make more money than the director of maintenance. And I'm not going to sit here and think that that's okay. It's not okay. We need to pay these individuals, and I urge my colleagues to not take the mayor's advice and push this along and push it to another committee. It's the right thing to do. I ask you to please consider it. The superintendent, if she really went against it, she would be sitting here saying, no, Mr. Aguirre, I disagree with you. If I had to put words in her mouth, she knows, she saw the work, and she knows they should be paid. With that, I yield.
Ms. Roderick.
So I think this is one of those situations where, at least for me, I'm looking at it as we don't necessarily have a policy that covers every single situation because none of us can really tell the future. We don't know what's going to happen next. So a lot of times, policy is derived from these individual situations. This is the first time that I'm hearing about this, but the more I listen to, I knew they were out there that whole weekend, but the more I hear about how every, almost every hour on the hour, they're being sent to another school because something's happening, right? So that's, that's one set of issues that we had that many problems. But the, the fact is, is that they did spend all of this time. This was a catastrophic event. So I don't think this is an either or. I think this is a, we can do both, that we set the stage right now. We, I would support paying them for that time, and then we do refer it to the policy committee and put something in place to say that. You know, I can appreciate the comp time, but, you know, at, at salaries where you are not making $210,000, that's not going to pay your mortgage, right? Comp time isn't going to take care of that. So I can absolutely appreciate that we don't have a policy in place. But again, I think the reality is, is that none of us can anticipate what's going to happen. That's where a lot of policies come from. So in my mind, we can do both at the same time. It doesn't have to be an either or. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Pereira.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Obviously, I, I mean, I agree. I think we definitely have to look at the salaries we pay people in the district and make sure they even out to the work they do, especially if they're managing people. Because there's nothing more than a blow to morale than making less than the person that you're managing. So that's a given, and that's not going to change this minute with this vote. So I agree that that needs to be changed. I agree that I would love to see, you know, those custodians get compensation because this was an extraordinary situation. My only hesitation is that we have quite a few employees on salary, and my hesitation would be that this would open up like a Pandora's Box type of situation. It's potential. I'm not saying it would happen, but I'm saying that there's a potential that that could happen. We could have then people say, well, I had to work this and that, and then we can't. I mean, are we just going to be paying everybody bonuses one at a time? That obviously wouldn't work that way. So I agree. I think they should receive compensation for that weekend. I think that this is something, I agree with Sarah, we can, you know, we could potentially do both. I do think they deserve compensation for that weekend. I do think we need to revisit this in policy because if this is something that's recurring, then we need to, you know, get ahead of the game so that this doesn't happen again. However, I am, my only hesitation is that if we say here, all right, we're going to provide them extra compensation, I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to have, you know, other employees saying, well, wait, that's not fair. I'm on salary, and I worked this many hours, and I, and I'm sure not all of them make 100,000 or 200 or whatever. I mean, I work salary. Trust me. And they probably would try to give me comp time. And I would say, I don't want the comp time. So I agree with Sarah as well, like, comp time, no, no, thank you. Give me, give me pay. Comp time isn't going to help me this week when I'm dragging from working. So, I mean, I agree with the, with, with everything that, you know, well, almost everything, I guess, that Mr. Aguirre and Sarah are saying. I'm just hesitant to do this immediately here so quick when this is the first time we've kind of heard about this. So I'm hesitant, hesitant to vote on something like that. I think that if, I would be fine personally if it went to policy and we rectified this policy, as long as we're guaranteeing, like 100% guaranteeing, that we're bringing it back so that these gentlemen get compensation when it's settled. I think, I think that's like the best of the both worlds, in my opinion, without me feeling like I'm making, you know, a huge mistake. I feel like them waiting for that compensation, you know, I'm assuming won't be too rough because when you make salary, you tend to try to, at least try, right, to live on the salary you make because you don't usually get overtime and all that jazz. So I'm, I'm thinking that it's less likely to be an issue if, if those custodians, you know, have to wait a little bit to get that compensation versus what may explode if we just take this vote now. Like, we might be stirring a big pot. I don't know. So I don't know. It's the first I've heard this. Those are my thoughts. With that, I yield.
Ms. Laravee.
Thank you. I'm leaning towards Mr. Aguirre's motion and not waiting. I mean, I know it's a very, very difficult situation, and I know it was 24/7 for almost three days, but compensation right now, I think, is the, is the right move. I think they were in the position, they stepped up that weekend, and what would we have done if they didn't? Right? So right now, making a decision, saying thank you, you deserve to be compensated, and then we go off and do our jobs and set up a policy meeting, just in case this does set a precedent of the situations that we are discussing. So if we compensate now, we leave it up to superintendent, do what you need to do, move very quickly in a policy meeting and get the job done. But the, the work that these two people did for this four district was amazing, and I'm going to support it this time. I mean, it's not their fault that we don't have a policy right now. It's not, it's kind of our fault that he doesn't make as much money as other people. So it's something that we have to fix. They did their job and fixed the schools. So I think we have to compensate them right now and, and move and set a policy meeting and, and do our jobs. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments, and I do think that we can long-term have a policy. I agree with all that stuff. I do think we should, we should look at it not necessarily as a policy, but when we sign a contract with an individual, we should stipulate the terms of that, of such contract. Mrs. Ponce is in a tough position because she relied on these folks all weekend. So when she relied on these folks, they never asked one time, am I getting double time? Am I getting overtime? Am I getting paid at all? They just came and did it. So that's the part that's really getting me to know that this is the type of individuals that came. But during that time, if Mr. Monas, Mr. Pacheco or superintendent had to call somebody, we call Fire Pro, we call this one, we call that one, you're going to see the bill come out when she gets us the information. All of those folks got paid. When they come out on a Sunday, if it's in the, whatever, you're going to get double time, you're paying. You're paying. You're paying. So really, it's not a matter of, in this case, only paying two people. This is an issue that we're going to, if it wasn't them, we're going to pay somebody else. If they didn't do what they had to do, we'd be paying somebody else to come in, serve pro or the like, to clean out entire areas and have even more of a mess. Never mind the preventative piece. How much savings were there in, in this kind of work in preventing? Maybe there were some situations where the, the stuff wasn't taken care of properly. When we find out the information, those are the questions I'm going to ask to see if it's, if there's other issues that need to be corrected. But I do think it's the right thing to do. I think the superintendent needs to have that flexibility. And to Mrs. Pereira's concern, this is not precedent-setting. We can, we can amend this to say for this one storm only if that makes her feel better, that it's just for this catastrophic event, whatever the date was, this event only. I'll make that in the form of an amendment to say, just for this particular piece. But I don't know anybody else that's on salary that doesn't make six figures. So I don't think that we have equal people. So I'd make that in the form of an amendment to, just for this one isolated weekend storm, Mrs. Ponce has the authority to do what's right and pay these gentlemen, the man and woman, the overtime. With that, I yield.
Do I have a second to Mr. Aguirre's amendment?
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion a second. So we can vote on the amendment first, I guess, this, be specific to this one storm. Anything further? Deb, please call the roll. This is isolated to that weekend.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Yes. Now, on the original motion to pay them for that weekend, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Yes. Now, on the original motion to pay them for that weekend, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. It's Superintendent Ponce, on behalf of the Polk School, requests acceptance of $6,000 donation from the Bristol County Savings Charitable Foundation, is, will be used to sponsor the WSAR radio show. Any discussion on the donations? Could I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Item number 11 is the approval of grants. We only have one, genocide education. Any discussion on that? Can I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
I got a motion a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Yes. Item 10 is the approval of contracts. Now, generally, we do these in a bundle unless someone has one item or two items or three items or as many as they want to pull out. Any discussion on the contracts? Mr. Aguirre.
Just, I think, the last time I mentioned if this was approvals or is already just a request for payment, so I'm assuming that they're all contracts that nothing's, nothing's after the fact.
On the bottom, it's continuations of contracts on the bottom, and the others are new contracts. We wanted to make sure, just so that we could differentiate between the two.
Yep. So the bottom, it's 360,000 for precision human resources. That's not a new contract? That's a, is that like a blanket? Is that what you're hearing?
It's a continuation.
I think those are, that's like a hiring program.
But it's not an additional 360,000?
No.
It's an, it's an additional 360,000.
What are these, temporaries?
This is, this is for the agencies that we are hiring staff from.
Yep. The only reason why I asked, I don't disagree with that per se, but if we're doing that, that means we're not filling a position that wasn't able to be filled. So at some point, that money's going to, this money's going to be deducted off somewhere else, just so we can kind of see where the, the total is. That's, the only other question I had was on the, the one for the bleachers inspection. That's a, I'm assuming that's a annual, like, it's going to be, come up all the time, so.
Yes. That's the, the entire gym infrastructure. So that'll be a regular occurrence. This is a per-year contract.
Yep. So what I would recommend, just trying to streamline this particular process, that's something that I would think is in the budget. Somewhere, it's budgeted for 11,000 or whatever for that amount. I think we need to look at whether it's through the policy subcommittee or finance or something, ways that this doesn't necessarily have to come on here because we have to do it. It's an inspection. You know, we have to do the fires. We have to, some of those things I don't necessarily think are on here, so I'm going to vote to approve it, of course, but I think that we should look at streamlining this so that you're not coming back here with things that are automatic. It's not a new, every year, you're going to have the same thing. So that's just my thought. But with that, I make a motion to approve them all.
Any further discussion?
Just quick.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes. So why wouldn't this be under continuous, Madam Superintendent?
Which one?
The one we just discussed, the bleachers and all of that stuff at Durfee.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr.?
Someone.
Yep.
So if we have the, the.
So I, so I think what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to discuss, we have to discuss it in finance to pinpoint exactly what it is that, that's wanted. I kind of understand what you want, but I think we have to be clear because I don't want to be in a situation where we, I assume that because it's in the budget and you guys haven't seen it and you find out later that we moved on with something that you didn't approve, you know, per se. And I think we have to clarify the piece on who the vendor is that's chosen because those change, that it's not automatic every year. So I think we have to have like a further discussion to talk about exactly, you know, what it is and how you want to move forward with it.
Yeah, I think we're definitely taking strides by, now this is new, the continuous. So I know what I want to see. I want, I would like to see all the new ones, you know, in a, alone, and the ones that we, you know, yearly, every other year, stuff like that.
No, because there are things that we do on a yearly basis.
So, I think what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to discuss, we have to discuss it in finance to pinpoint exactly what it is that's wanted. I kind of understand what you want, but I think we have to be clear, because I don't want to be in a situation where we, I assume that because it's in the budget, and you guys haven't seen it, and you find out later that we moved on with something that you didn't approve, you know, per se, and I think we have to clarify the piece on who the vendor is that's chosen, because those change, it's not automatic every year. So, I think we have to have like a further discussion to talk about exactly, you know, what it is and how you want to move forward with it.
Yeah. I think we're definitely taking strides by, now this is new, the continuous. So, I know what I want to see. I want, I would like to see all the new ones, you know, in a, alone, and the ones that we, you know, yearly, every other year, stuff like that.
No, 'cause there are things that we do on a yearly basis.
Right.
And the things that we do on a yearly basis, in most cases, are with the same vendors, but there are a lot of cases where they're not the same vendors. So, it's, you know, one of those things. So, it's, I think we have to break down exactly what it is that the school committee wants, and then we can work on it.
Perfect. Thank you. I yield.
Let's have the...
Oh, Mr. Pacheco, I'm sorry. So, there's also, we're also bound by the $10,000 piece. So, we can buy eight bubblers, six bubblers, and it's gonna end up on this page. And maybe that number needs to be looked at also, because we can't buy much with $10,000 anymore when it comes to supplies and stuff like that. So, if that could also be one of, a topic for our finance meeting.
Thank you.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second.
Second.
A second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eleven is the approval of grants. We only have one, genocide education. Any discussion on that? Can I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
I got a motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, item twelve-one is a discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Alyssa Cabral, nurse for the Farver Park Schools, as presented by Tom Coogan.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on Ms. Cabral? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item twelve-two is a discussion and vote to approve the Program of Studies Course Catalog at Derfi High School, as referred by the Instructional Subcommittee and presented by Matt DiMaris, principal of BMC Derfi High School. Mr. DiMaris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be for you tonight. You all have the Program of Studies and the executive summary. I just wanted to highlight some things. We organize the executive summary with four organizing principles, student achievement and accountability as a focus, okay? So, we are looking at how we can formalize in a structural way in our schedule intervention to continue to expand on the work that's going on this year. And then aligning course curriculum to high-quality instructional materials, such as the College Board, Carnegie Project Lead the Way, so we're expanding offerings there. So, that segues right into number two, increased advanced coursework options, where we have boosted on numbers in a very big way this year and looking to next year to see that that growth continues in terms of students participating in pre-AP and AP classes. So, we're expanding those offerings. We are expanding our early college pathways. And in the summary, in the Science Department in particular, you see a major expansion in our Project Lead the Way course offerings. And those courses count as advanced academic courses when students take them in their junior and senior year, when we're talking about the accountability formula for the school. We're expanding, we're proposing to expand career and tech ed programming, adding criminal justice courses as a potential first step to a new CTE pathway. We're expanding the infant and toddler care, that's ongoing right now. And then with our co-op liaison coordinator onboard now, we're looking to really boost and take that step to co-op. So, there are some students that do co-op, but not enough. So, those seniors that go out into the field related to the shop they're in, that counts as advanced coursework for them, but it also gives them that real-world experience outside of the walls here. And then, on the fourth organizing principle, expanding a curriculum that reflects the diverse student body and personalizes learning. And we're doing that by way of expanding our AP offerings and some new offerings in the World Language Program. If you want me to respond to anything in particular, in terms of specific courses being offered, or the programs that are in the Program of Studies, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions for Principal DiMaris? Mr. Agia?
Not a question, just a comment. I was at the meeting, so I reviewed a lot of the stuff here. There's a lot in this, as I mentioned at the other Instructional Subcommittee Meeting, and the structure of how we operate as a school committee is that we hold the superintendent accountable to then hold the high school accountable and all the other schools. So, my comment at that time was that we need to see results. I said that in the past, I said it now, and I'm gonna say it here again. So, the superintendent is aware, at least from this member, that I really feel like we need to see some results. So, we need to do what we need to do to support you, which I think we've done, and the results, hopefully, are gonna be, you know, forthcoming. But there is a lot in here. Your staff worked hard, they were all ready to answer the questions, so I'm gonna support this, and I wish you for the best. Just know that we are looking at, we need to have the results. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further?
We got a motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Show your second.
I got, is motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-point-three is a discussion and vote to approve an additional SEL position and office para at Talbot, as presented by Tom Coogan and Brian Repoza, principal of Talbot.
Principal Repoza is looking to have the same structure that's in place at both the Morton and the Talbot schools. There's two positions he has in play here. On the first position, the SEL liaison, he currently has one for two of the three grades that is his school services. He's looking to have one dedicated to that third grade, again, using that in that first responder role for any student needs and help to support the students in that grade. The committee was good enough to okay a third SEL liaison, which is dedicated to his substantially separate classroom strand, which services about seventy-five to eighty kids in six different classrooms. So, this would be an additional one to that, just so that he can have that complement of one SEL liaison for each grade. The second position is a paraprofessional that would staff the Student Service Center so that when students come down before speaking with either a administrator or VP regarding any referral or other need, that there's somebody there to greet them, manage them, also either reschedule them for later in the day, depending on the caseload that's going on at the time. And that position exists in the other two schools, they have a paraprofessional and office para that staffs that area and receives those kids, so there's no students unattended while they're waiting to see somebody. I see Principal Repoza has joined me, so I'll step aside and let him speak to the merits of either one of those positions, if there are any questions.
Any questions on these two items? Ms. Larevi?
Hi, Mr. Repoza. Just quickly, who's watching the kids now when they go down there?
So, right now, we don't actually, at our school, we don't, we don't have a policy or system where kids get sent out of class. What we do is if a teacher calls for support, we go to the room. So, an SEL liaison, a SAC, could be an assistant principal. If, you know, we're in a situation where a student might need to wait a couple minutes, we're utilizing the main office for that, you know, which is a bit challenging at times. Or someone else who's available, we might say, hey, you know, if you can hang out with so-and-so while we deal with a different situation. So, this person would primarily just be working just around that student support piece, so that my office paraprofessional that I have now and clerk can focus on, you know, running that main office.
It was just a small safety concern, that's why I asked the question.
Oh, no. They're not unattended. Don't worry.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just a question on the structures. It says this would be looking to replicate the structures in the other middle schools, so I'm assuming that that means that the middle schools have a, one for six, one for seven. So, they all have three SELs?
No. I think that piece was only about the paraprofessional for the Office of Student Support. That's what the other middle schools have. Right now, we have a pretty solid structure for the SEL liaisons in our building, but I do not have one staffing sixth grade. So, I would be looking to add one to my sixth grade team currently.
But they do, Mr. Agia. The other schools have SEL liaisons for grade levels.
Each grade?
Yes.
Because that's what I'm reading here. It says to replicate the sixth grade is looking to replicate the structures of the other middle schools. He has the additional one for his substantially separate strand.
So, currently, I have in, as an example, the way that the student support team functions, in seventh and eighth grade, I have an SEL liaison. I came to the committee, advocated for a third to support the substantially separate population. This would technically be a fourth, but this would be positioned in sixth grade, because I do not have a person there. At each of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, with this addition, I would have an SEL liaison and an ISL at each grade level. And what we've done is the Instructional Support Liaison is working around academic support, credit recovery, students who are struggling, might be failing classes, they're going into classes with students, working through, maybe they're struggling in math, whatever it might be. The SEL liaison is working very closely with the School Adjustment Counselor, doing sort of direct response around the social-emotional piece. So, with the addition of this one, I would have one in sixth, one in seventh, one in eighth, and then I still have one that supports just the substantially separate, because I have the district program for social-emotional at Talbot.
Yeah. What happens at the K-8 schools for the same?
I'm not sure what happens.
Dr. B has an office, she has a SAM, replicates the high school instead of an office para.
I was meaning, sorry, I should have clarified, the SEL liaison piece?
Right. So, it depends on, I, both K-8 principals I hear, so certainly, they can speak to how they're using their positions in their schools, but principals have come to us based on their needs and asked us for how they divide up their students and how, the kind of supports that they want. As part of, they create many teams.
The sixth, seventh, eighth cohorts are smaller at those particular schools too, so they could speak to how they use their SEL liaisons in those buildings.
Yeah. The only reason why I'm saying it is when Mr. Repoza's talking, he's talking middle school, has a whole slew of issues that are just middle school-related. I support what you're saying. But at the same time, we have a K-8 school has middle school age kids. Granted, they have less strands of them, but they still have a need for them just identified just as to deal with the middle school. And I think if we're gonna build structures, we should be building them like this makes sense. What you just said makes sense, the ISL, the SEL liaison, like, there's a system, which I think tells us all that we're doing the right things, creating these positions, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it equal for other places. If they don't ask for it, doesn't mean that they don't deserve it as part of their structure. That's basically what I'm saying. The one about the office, I know years ago, CUS had one that was paid a lot more than everybody else in the district. Is that now, is that person left, so it's sort of, everybody's on equal playing field?
They were on government contract. That was a para that was on government contract. They were different classification.
It was not even that. I think this was a parent-worker type thing or something like that. They got paid sometimes more than a teacher.
From a long time ago.
But that's no longer. So, these are all gonna get paid the same in each of the...
Yes.
And my last comment is on the salary. So, Madam Superintendent, I know we spoke, I sent you a request to look at some guidelines for salaries as we go to these different positions. And as I just said, I think things make sense along the way, like, we have the ISL, we have the SEL liaison, we have a certified counselor, we have, but I think that we need a structure to say how much people are gonna get paid and what steps do they go on. And I know there's been incidents, not talking about the individuals, because I have no problem with any of the individuals, but when you look at a position, we have to be careful when we give steps, and I don't think we've done a good job of that over the, over the years. And Madam Superintendent knows exactly what I'm talking about. So, at some point, I think we need a policy that states, just like in the administrator's contract, it states if you were working for X dollars and you get a different job, you're gonna go on that step above where that was. It gives a structure to it. What we have sometimes is somebody's making like $32,000, working in the same school, and then they get $55,000, because we don't have a structure. So, the only thing I would say is short of a policy, Madam Superintendent, I'd be very careful of how you issue the steps, so they start at the, I think it makes sense, they start at the lowest step of the next level of employment, and then it will, it won't create those inequities. So, as long as you think that's gonna go through, I definitely support this, and best of wishes to you. Thank you. I yield.
Any further discussion? Deb, could you please call the roll?
I need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item twelve-four is discussion and vote to approve the additional two SEL liaisons at the Green Elementary, as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Liz Dunn, principal of the Green Elementary School.
Principal Dunn is here to address any questions. In addition, you received the backup in your folders and your binders for tonight's meeting. The logic being, again, to create a structure where there's an SEL liaison paired with a SAC at each grade level. The SAC can do the little bit heavier lifting and the work that's involved in working with some of these students and providing services, the SEL liaison as the first responder and sort of the support system at the first level. And I'll let Dr. Dunn speak to that.
Good evening, everybody. We currently have one SEL liaison, and obviously, we have three school adjustment counselors. So, the idea is, is that we'll hire two additional if you, if the committee so votes to work individually with the school adjustment counselors to support their work. Right now, we have one that's supporting all three SACs in our building.
Any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just the same questions probably from Mr. Coogan about where, what do the other schools look like?
As you see tonight, there's another motion for another school behind this one. I think the SEL liaison program is beginning to sort of take hold, and some of those effective strategies that are being implemented are driving these requests for further as we enter the budget season. I expect that we'll probably see more requests to structure this the same. Again, this is a new position this year, so this is evolving as the year goes on, and as they see the success of the response to those people and the support those people are able to provide, that principals are then coming forward with more requests to try to implement that program.
Thank you. You know, I support this. I, I think where we're lacking is in the information across the district on it, so if we could potentially just get an update on what it looks like. So, Ms. Dunn was talking about, she has three school adjustment counselors, and she's gonna have one SEL liaison to back up the three. So, I'm supporting that. But I'm supporting that without knowing what do the other schools do similar to that. So, if I'm at a different school and I have three school adjustment counselors, who is backing up those people at those schools to see what their structure looks like? That's my only, it's not against this, but it's, I don't want to wait for the budget to worry about, well, maybe then we'll get equity. If we can get a report to say, here's what it looks like for the school adjustment counselor/ SEL liaison across the district, it'll help us in the future, maybe next meeting, to figure out, as people watch this and say, oh, that makes sense, we should all have one. We should all have one. Or if they're using it in, in a different way, they have an ISL instead, all I'm asking for is a report, but that would make sense. Thank you. I yield.
Ms. Rodricks?
So along those same lines, obviously, I fully support a social emotional liaison. Like, if, if I had my way, everyone would have multiple of them. And I, I fully understand allowing schools to determine what their needs are, right? That makes perfect sense to me. But I'm wondering if it makes sense, as we're trying to really implement some structures and, and implement some equity across the district, across schools, can we look at some of the best practices that we've seen from schools that have used them well? And then bring that information to schools that maybe don't have an SEL liaison or a community facilitator, in fact, and talk about, like, what are the things that are working and what are the things that maybe need tweaking? So that way, you might not think you need one because you might not be sure how to use them exactly, but here are some, here's some information from schools that have used them really well. And, you know, I know at Talbit, they're using them very strategically and they're really taking a load off of some of the, the work that the SACs are doing. You know, I, I disagree with the, the idea that the SACs are doing all the heavy lifting because I think actually our SEL liaisons are doing a lot of the heavy lifting in that, in those buildings. Because we know that it's not our, our kids that are receiving SAC services that take up most of that time. It's our SEL liaison. So I would love to see some kind of best practices across the district. Mr. Coogan, it's not a, it's not a knock on you. I'm just saying there's value to this position.
I was just going to apologize for, for using the wrong words. What I meant was providing the services at a certain level, certified counselors, et cetera. So.
We know you meant, I just want to add value to what the SEL liaison is doing.
Absolutely. And I think what you're seeing is that as this position evolves this year, those best practices are what are driving these, these requests for more.
So then can we take those best practices, bring that information out so that way other schools can see how they're being used? That's my only comment. That's my suggestion. And with that, I yield.
Do I have a motion, a second, Deb? Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
This one, as, as she was talking, I looked at the rationale. And the last paragraph in the rationale reads, "There are elementary schools with smaller student populations that have more SEL support staff than Green. We need to be able to meet the needs of our students and believe the extra support will be effectively able to meet these needs." So that's, that last paragraph is exactly what I'm talking about. So if, it shouldn't be that one, other schools have more SEL support than they, we all need to have adequate SEL support. So that just highlights exactly what I'm asking. I yield.
Do I have a motion, a second, Deb?
You do.
Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mayor? I'm sorry. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. This is twelve-five. It's the same, exact same thing, to add an additional SEL position at Viveras Elementary School, as presented by Tom Coogan and Principal Woody, principal.
Principal Woody's on her way up. Again, this is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Coogan.
Principal Woody's on her way up, but again, this is similar to the motion we had from Principal Repozo regarding a, an SEL liaison to service a specific population at her school and to help her respond to the needs of those students. So I'll let her speak.
Hi. So we currently have a behavior therapist and SEL liaison at the Viveras School. And this year, we had a large influx into our social emotional classrooms, our special education, self-contained classrooms. And we sort of repurposed one of those positions to support those classrooms. So we're asking for an additional SEL liaison so that we can go back to the structure that we had for our general education classrooms. We added K two student adjustment counselor assigned, as well as an SEL liaison to each grade level. So that's what we're hoping to get back to.
Any discussion? I already have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-six is a discussion and vote to approve the school committee meeting calendar for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Pereira?
Just asking if, sorry? Oh, no, it's okay. Just asking if the committee would be willing to, I am unable to attend, be in town on May eighth or be here on May eighth. I was wondering if the committee would either change that May meeting to the May first or the fifteenth, like the one before or after, if that's, if nobody else has anything going on and that works, this way I don't have to miss a meeting.
You mean April?
Uh, no, I mean May.
It says May thirteenth on my, my piece, so.
She's talking this year.
So you're talking now?
She's referring to this year. This is next year's calendar.
Next year.
Yeah, next year's calendar, yeah. So it would, if it was the first Monday in May as opposed to the second.
Of twenty-four.
Yes, of twenty-four.
May of twenty-four, okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't have the calendar right in front of me.
Yeah, no problem.
Kevin?
No problem. I'm just reading it. So as you were talking, on May, our meeting is May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Right. And what's the one before that?
April eighth.
April, oh, no, 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 I mean in May, the.
In twenty-twenty-four, there's none.
There's one. The thirteenth.
Yeah, the thirteenth.
Of May.
She's referencing this year.
A week before or the week after.
Ms. Pereira, are you referring to the current year?
No, I'm referring to this, to this, no. This year's too late. This, it's already up where we're having our meeting, right? I'm talking about, this is two thousand and, yeah, the following one. But what I'm saying is, I'm not here the second week. And let me look. Yeah, so if we could move that meeting to, I guess, to like the, the twentieth, the week after, then I would be able to attend. That's all I'm saying. If we want to keep it the same, we can, that's fine.
Personally, I don't, I wasn't trying to say I'm not in favor of it. I would just read.
I may not be here, who knows?
Well, when you said the eighth.
I'm thinking ahead.
So if you needed to, to not be on the eighth.
Sorry, I wrote down the wrong date, Kev.
Huh? May sixth, she wants to go.
Well, no, I'm saying May twentieth. Like, do it a week late. Can we do it a week late? Is that a problem?
So you're not going to be here on May thirteenth?
Correct.
All right. I thought you said the eighth. That's what I was.
No, I wrote down the wrong date, sorry.
No problem.
My apologies for the confusion. If it's a problem, it's no big deal.
Motion to move to the twentieth.
I figured I'd mention it since it came up.
Was the motion made? Second.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to move the May thirteenth meeting, twenty-twenty-four, to the twentieth of May.
Yeah, to the twentieth.
Yep.
Could you call the roll, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes, but can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So I have no problem changing the date, right? We're going to change the date, that's not an issue. But I just get a little weirded out about changing a date to support one person when it, you are absolutely right, we, none of us could be here next year because it's an election year. And so that's why I'm just sort of, kind of, I feel weird about it because we're changing the, I'm, I voted yes, I'm not changing my vote, but I just want to point out that it is an election year. So it feels kind of weird to me to approve changing a date for one person when none of us could be here, sitting on this stage. So I just want to clarify that that's the look on my face and that's why I kind of seem a little weirded out by it.
No, and if I can, I agree, which is why I said I totally understand because I very, I don't even know if I'm going to attempt to be here next year. But I'm just trying to be proactive and think ahead because I don't want to continue to miss every May meeting. It doesn't seem like I would be doing my due diligence if I didn't at least kind of think maybe that's a possibility, so rectify it now. And I figure whoever's sitting up here, you know, at that time, they'll be okay with it too. You know, I did, you know, but, so I appreciate it though, thank you.
Mayor Coogan?
I just didn't vote yet, Kevin. Yes, Mr. Agia?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
As we were talking, and Ms. Pereira indicated that it's too late for the current year. So I think out of respect for the similar type of vote, if she's not going to be here on May eighth, why don't we just move that meeting in a couple of months to the second, whether it's the fifteenth or whatever? Because if we're going to do that, I think we need to be cordial and respectful to all of us. And she just mentioned that she's not going to be here on the eighth. Now, that's three months' notice for everybody. I think doing the right thing by our colleagues would be to move that meeting to the fifteenth if that's what would help to make sure that you're going to be here. I would make that in the form of a motion, but if you could just tell us if that, does the fifteenth work?
Thank you, I appreciate that, yes.
The fifteenth works, okay.
Yes.
So I make a motion to move the May eighth meeting to May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three, yep, okay.
Thank you, Kevin, I appreciate it.
I got a motion, a second.
Ms. Rodricks is just checking her calendar.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Wait, maybe just got up too, we might want to.
That's all right, we got the votes.
Who seconded the motion, ma'am?
I thought Ms. Rodricks.
That was me.
No.
I'm sorry. Who seconded the motion? Mr. Agia, I made the motion, and you're second.
Second.
I got a second from Bobby.
Just to be aware that May is a busy month for the school.
That's my concern.
Location may change.
Okay. Keep in mind that it is a busy month for the schools and we have to be cognizant that we may have to move the location. But that's not, with three months to go, we'll find a place. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And you'll send that out in an email to everybody, Deb, please, thanks.
Jeff, I'll update it on the computer as well.
All right. Twelve-seven is a discussion and vote to accept.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can we just take a motion, roll call on the, that was just to change? That was just to change, but the actual.
Okay.
Motion to approve the.
No, the motion was made.
Oh, the motion was made, it was a second.
All right, call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thanks, Deb. Twelve-seven is a discussion and vote to accept the school improvement plans and district improvement plans, as presented by Dr. Tracy Curly, Assistant Superintendent, the Chief Academic Chair.
Last week, we had an opportunity at the instructional subcommittee meeting to present the district school impro, uh, the district's improvement plan along with the school improvement plans. At that time, we had offered the subcommittee members an alignment overview, and I think that is something that everybody has. Within the alignment overview is a link to all of the individual school improvement plans, and you may or may not have had an opportunity to look through all of those. But what we wanted to show in the alignment document is that district instructional priority of providing all students equitable access to and engagement in grade level work and then providing scaffolding where needed. And in the alignment document, you can see that in all of the school improvement plans, there are statements in terms of the instructional priorities for each of the schools that aligns with the district priority. Action plans are aligned. And I think what, one of the things that we anticipated potentially for discussion was the fact that the format across schools isn't the same. We did give schools an opportunity to either use a new format that was introduced to us this year by the Department of Ed, or to use an older format, the previous format that had been introduced to us by the Department of Ed and one that all of our turnaround schools were using. So this year, the formats look a little bit different. One format is aligned to the turnaround practices, one is hyper-focused on an instructional priority that is district-wide with associated action plans. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Rodricks?
I'm glad you brought that up about the plans because I got to tell you, it made it really challenging for me to be able to look at what one school was doing and what the priorities were there and what the plans were because they just looked so very different. Now, I had issue, that had nothing to do with anybody accessing the information, but I do want to point out that the link for RPA actually gave me Spencer Borden.
Okay.
And so I couldn't see any of the, the RPA information.
Okay.
And then Sylvia, the only information that I had was their cover sheet. It was just the, like, I guess, the first slide of a presentation and I didn't see, there was nothing else moving forward. So I don't have any of those two pieces.
Okay.
So is the plan for them to use the same?
Yes.
Okay.
We will, moving forward. So this year was the first year that the state actually offered this, this new format. And at the district level, our ILT participated last year in a prioritization process. That was something that we brought to all of the principals and their teams during the administrative institute. So during that time, we, we offered up the new format, but some schools had already started working on their plans in the old format. And out of respect, we said, keep doing that, make sure that you incorporate this new instructional priority. And so that's why they look different this year. But moving forward, everybody will use the same format.
I completely get that, that makes sense. You don't want to just kind of create this upheaval and make everybody redo all of their work. But it does make it hard because the same information isn't prevent, isn't presented for each school. So it makes it a little bit more difficult, a lot more difficult, to be able to compare what one's doing versus what another one is doing, what the priorities here might be versus what the priorities there might be. So I'm glad that moving forward will be the same, but I completely understand the rationale and I wouldn't have wanted to change it either. That, that wouldn't feel right. I have two questions. So I don't know if they're questions, but they're more comments, I guess. So have we gotten feedback from teachers about the number of walkthroughs that are happening? Because I'm seeing on all of the plans that there is a lot of walkthroughs, there's a lot of teacher evaluation. Have we gotten feedback from teachers about what that is like for them to have folks coming through their classroom and what the quality of feedback has been? And has that made a difference in, in what they're doing?
Sure. So we, we have not gotten formal feedback around that. We have certainly gotten feedback from schools, from individuals. We recognize, so we came up with a structure, we developed it a couple of years ago in terms of the kinds of different, the different kinds of walks that people could expect at schools. And some would offer personalized feedback, others would offer whole school feedback. Sometimes it would go directly, depending on the walk, it would go directly to a principal and the principal would then communicate to the staff. And so staff might see things like in four out of five classrooms, high-quality instructional materials were being used. In three out of the five classrooms, the scaffolding was appropriate for the task and for the student audience. That's the kind of feedback I think school, teachers should expect when we are, when there is a district walk or if there is a, a body of school and district personnel. Otherwise, what we're, what we're doing is, sometimes we have accompanied school leaders, whether it's a department chair or a principal, we, some administrator in the building on school walks. And sometimes the purpose of those walks is for a director to be coaching a department chair or some other administrator in the building. And we did find that if, if we were providing any coaching and then that feedback ended up in, you know, with a teacher and it was personalized feedback, I think we, we did learn that that was making teachers feel uncomfortable, that a district administrator was in the room and then there was feedback. We were differentiating those in terms of, of coaching up a, a school-based administrator, but that wasn't being differentiated for the teacher. So we have backed off of that. So now if we're in a school for the purpose of coaching a school-based administrator, a teacher doesn't receive that kind of personalized feedback, they go into multiple classrooms and they're still getting overall feedback.
So I, I would just encourage that piece, that we ask our teachers, what is that like for them? And is there anything about that that would make, I understand the purpose, but is there anything about that process that would make teachers feel more comfortable? I know, you know, teaching in higher ed, I get really nervous when the director of my program starts walking through my classroom, even though she's typically just coming in to check in with the students. It still puts me in a different position of feeling like, you know, there's somebody monitoring my every move. And believe it or not, I am an introvert, and so that feels very stressful for me. So I would just encourage getting that feedback from the teachers to see what that feels like. Because I know I've also heard from my own child that there have been a lot of people in and out of the classroom. And so what is the impact on the kids as well? Because that can be really dysregulating or disruptive for, especially the little ones who might not understand why folks are coming into the, into the classroom. I'm not telling you that you should not be doing walkthroughs, not at all. And I do not want you to hear that. But I'm just suggesting that we go back and we get that feedback from the teachers and look at too what the impact is for the kids. And then going back to the kids, I also noticed that there's a really significant focus on assessment. There's, there's a, and data collection from our kids. What is that, what is the impact on students right now? And is it just, because when I read this, it feels very assessment-heavy, but is that the case in all of our classrooms? Like, are our kids being reassessed just constantly in a very formal way? Because that's how it reads.
So coming out of a joint, the Joint Labor Management Committee is a couple of years ago, was an agreement that we would not, in any particular content area, that we would not hold, have more than three district-level assessments. not hold, have more than three district-level assessments. So for Anet, we would administer A1, A2, A3, and then there'd be an optional one. What happens at the school level, I think in terms of formative assessments, there's always the potential for that. We're asking teachers to gather data all of the time, and sometimes that comes through observation, and sometimes that comes through with, you know, informal data collection, and sometimes even in, even for formative assessments, they might, it might feel potentially intrusive for students and make people nervous. But I think that, that's just a kind of a discussion that needs to be had over and over again with students and with families, that we're not collecting data for, we're not collecting data for nothing. We're not collecting data so that we can be kind of evaluative of students and what they're capable of, but it's really to inform instruction. So, and I feel similarly, I think, about the way that we go into classrooms or not. Our feeling is that the more we're there, it will just become kind of nothingness. Go in and out seamlessly, no one notices you're there. What are, for, in our experience, students are, you know, so happy to share their work. We sit down alongside them, they tell us what they're working on, that they're proud of what they're doing. So when we feel like if we keep doing that, if we keep it up, then everybody will just get more comfortable with the whole process.
Do the kids know why you're there? When you walk into the room, this is just me as a parent of three very different children, right? One kid wouldn't even notice that you were in the room. I have another kid that's going to be the kid that's going to come up to you, and she's going to show you all the things that she did. And then I have another one who would become very dysregulated by having folks in the room and not knowing why they're there. So I'm just wondering, do we go in and do we introduce ourselves? Do we say why we're there? So that way, the kids aren't feeling like, hey, who's this person that's walking into the classroom?
So I think in terms of kind of a whole group, you know, entrance, if two or three of us walk into a room, we, I think we, we try initially to just, you know, to just be walk, watching, and then interact when it's appropriate, so that we are not interrupting in any way. But, and when that happens, we certainly introduce ourselves, and some students will say, are, you know, are you the boss? I had someone ask the other, are you the boss? No, I'm not the boss, I'm just here learning. So I think that-
I tell them I'm the boss of my house.
Yeah, maybe.
Most, sometimes. The seven-year-olds, really.
So I think that we try, you know, I think we're, we're all educators, and we're conscious of the fact that it can be, it can feel to a teacher like an interruption, even when we don't mean it to be. We have some teachers who, as soon as we walk in, will say, don't worry, guys, that, you know, they're here to, they're not here to see you, they're here to see me, or these are my friends, or whatever it is. So I think everybody's pretty conscious of that, and makes an attempt to make students feel comfortable. But I understand that certainly there, there can be a student or more in the room that are not comfortable at all.
And these aren't criticisms, these are, these are just points that I'm, I'm making, because when I read the plans, that's sort of how it comes across. And so that's why I wanted to clarify. Again, they are not criticisms, they are things to think about. And if I don't ask the question, then I'm not going to have the answer. So that's where I was going with that, and with that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
Just had it, I was at the subcommittee meeting, so I knew some of those issues. So, one of the things we talked about, when I was able to look at a few of the actual plans, was the data that's in it, relative to making progress and all that stuff. So I don't think that, I didn't look at them all, but I think there's some that was just referring to, when the numbers come out, we're gonna do increases or whatever else. So I think it would be good if we could get some, like, just pull out the data of what the actual goals are for each of the schools, so we know, my students are gonna go from X to Y. They were done at the wrong time, and it didn't come through, I think it's a timing mechanism. But I, for one, can't necessarily try to hold the superintendent accountable to make progress if we don't know what she's holding everybody else to. And I think she wants to know that info as well. But in a nice, clear, concise way, I think if you could present that to us, it would be much appreciated, in my view. The, you had mentioned something about an agreement on how much assessment. Can you just send this out under a private, on a Friday email or something? It's the first I heard of that, so-
Sure.
Whatever that is.
The Labor Management.
Yeah, whatever it is. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Do I have a motion, a second?
There's no motion needed, it's-
Oh, okay.
It's a discussion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
No, no, it's a vote, sorry.
Vote to accept.
No, it's a vote to accept.
Did I get a motion?
I don't think we need it. I think the law now reads that we just have to get them presented.
Again, it says discussion and vote to accept.
We should check that out in the future, but yes.
I just, I need a motion.
So move.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-nine, I'm sorry, twelve-eight, is a discussion and vote to address the Fall River City Council's request for input by the school committee as to whether there is a need to increase the compensation for school committee members. I guess this falls to me, in response to a letter initiated by school committee members.
What are we doing?
Somebody's down.
Somebody fell.
What just happened?
Recession.
Recession, please. Returning to twelve point eight, obviously the Fall River City Council wants to know what the school committee's feelings are on Mr. Aguirre's letter, asking for a pay increase for school committee members. I would ask Mr. Aguirre if he'd like to explain what, what that was about.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, I've served on this committee for a long time, and I like to do my research to know what people get paid, what people are doing, their jobs and their responsibilities. And I know we all take our job very seriously here on the, on the school committee. So I'm gonna read the letter so that the public can get exactly what I wrote. Dear Honorable Fall River City Council, and I copied this to the mayor. I did this this way because if I was to talk to all of my colleagues ahead of time, that would be a violation of the open meeting law, and I did not want to do that. So I sent this letter with my home address, based on me as an individual sending the letter. I want to write to you today to request your consideration of a change related to the compensation for school committee members. The duties and expectations of the school committee are quite similar to the duties and expectations for Fall River City Councilors. The school committee compensation is currently less than half of that which the city council receives. While I do not believe that anyone serves on either of these two part-time elected positions for financial reasons alone, it does not make sense to have two different compensation levels for very similar positions. I respectfully request that the city council consider passing an ordinance that reads, "School committee members will receive compensation for performance of their duties equal to the compensation of Fall River City Councilors. Thank you for your consideration." Now, my rationale for this was I've seen in other communities that exact language is used. So the members of town councils, school committees, they get equal compensation. And if you look around the area, there's some that have, some school committees don't get paid. I vehemently disagree with that. We need to have people on the school committee that dedicate their time, and, and time away from their families. And all communities should respect the position of school committee, and treat them with the respect and the benefits that come along with that. If you do a little history, in the old days, school committee members were eligible to pay, to have health care from the city, paid at the same rate as everybody else. Not free, paid. I happen to take advantage of that fifteen years ago, when I first started on this committee, because I was going to school, I was doing an internship for free, and I needed health care. So I was able to take advantage of that health care, and paid almost my entire school committee salary to pay for the health care that I was to receive. That's a benefit like every other person has. So my intention on bringing this forward to the city council was that it's under their purview. It's under the purview of a city councilor to create ordinances in the city of Fall River. And the purpose of this letter was to ask for their consideration to actually get it to the city council, go to the ordinance committee, and let the ordinance committee do their due diligence. Back up, find out the information, how much other people get, what are we looking at, the timing. This is not something that we should do tomorrow and we're gonna get a raise. This would be something that would go into effect the next election, no matter who gets elected. But I think it's a valid thing to look at. While at the same time, through the process, when you look across the city of Fall River, there's boards and commissions in the city of Fall River that don't make sense either. So they want people to donate and dedicate their time, well, there's no rhyme or reason why each board gets a hundred dollars, one get none, some get three thousand, some get five thousand, the different things. So I think this is something to, we're not making a decision here, but I definitely think it's food for thought in the future to let the ordinance committee do their due diligence, and come up with either a plan, whether it's a multi-tiered plan, whether it's all at once, whether, whatever it is. But it is definitely, in my opinion, having been dedicated to this school committee over the years, there's absolutely no way that the school committee should get forty-five percent of the pay of a city councilor. I'm not demeaning the city council in any way, shape, or form. They deserve and get, earn the money that they get. But there's nobody that can tell me that we only should be getting forty-five percent of what a city councilor gets. So I ask for your, your consideration, there's actually nothing before us to vote on that, that is legal or anything. This is before the city council. They asked us to weigh in, I've already weighed in with my letter, and I'm weighing in here today. I'd ask you all to be honest and open, that we're not making any decisions, let them do it. And as Ms. Pereira said, or somebody else said, we don't know who's gonna get elected next year anyway. But if they, if they looked at it now, this has been going on for years. So this is something that needs to get looked at. So in the future, somebody might say, hey, you know what, I'm gonna go put my name on the line, I'm gonna go out and, and, and take the risk, and I'm gonna get compensated accordingly, the same as the city councilor. Nobody should have to make a decision to say, well, I'll make another nine grand, so let me run for city council. If you're passionate about the schools, you should be running for the schools, regardless of what pay. And for anybody out there that's gonna say, well, what are, what are you doing? You just want to get the money? I'll tell you right now, I'm running for school committee again, I don't give a care if I get paid seven thousand or zero. It's not why I'm doing this. The end of the day, we shouldn't have to make that determination. The city council, it's their purview, let them analyze it and come up with a plan. With that, I yield.
Okay, so just to be clear on that, there is no open meeting violation for having a discussion about an item that we have no jurisdiction over. I checked with both corporation councils on this. We have no, as Mr. Aguirre was kind enough to point out, this is entirely in the purview of the city council. We have no jurisdiction over a pay raise, so it can be discussed prior to a meeting legally. The second issue is, I have no problem, and I told Mr. Aguirre, there's putting together a panel with a couple of members of the school committee, maybe a couple of members of the boards, one paid, one not paid, and a couple of members of the city council to sit down and come up with a reasonable pay increase. I do believe that as Mr. Aguirre just pointed out, a hundred percent increase, one fell swoop, is not something I can support at this time. I can support, again, a rational, calm process, where we have plenty of time before this election is up, to, to study all of the boards. He's exactly right. I told him this yesterday, when we were gabbing about this, that we can do a calm, rational study, and come up with a plan to increase it. That the city council merely wanted our opinion, it's, as, as Mr. Aguirre said, it's not binding or anything, they wanted our opinion on his letter, which is what's exactly in the memo from the city council, at the regular meeting of the city council on January twenty-fourth. A discussion was held regarding a letter received from school committee member Kevin Aguirre. That's all we're talking to, is his letter at this time. And all I'm asking for is a show of hands, or, or a roll call, we can make it, it's unofficial, we don't even need a motion and a second. We have no jurisdiction over this whatsoever, as Mr. Aguirre was kind enough to point out. It's just one of our feelings, and going forward, we'll get a couple of volunteers from the city council, a couple from the school committee, and come up with some calm, rational ways to both give people a fair shake on their pay, and look at the boards, as Mr. Aguirre pointed out. Ms. Roderick's?
I think an opinion is probably gonna take more, it, it's a little bit more nuanced than just a roll call. So, speaking as someone that had no idea that the school committee even got paid at the time that I was, until Deb reached out and asked for my direct deposit information, that was when I figured that out. So that's the position that I'm coming from. I do think, now knowing, because I was unaware, that some boards were paid, others weren't paid, that this one is paid this much, that board is paid that much, I do think in the interest of getting people to run and serve, that there has to be some equity across the board. So if, if we're looking at it in terms of the amount of time that is anticipated, right, none of us can say for sure how long somebody spends doing X, Y, and Z. If we're looking at that, then I do think we need to have a planful move towards creating that system, where if you're meeting once every three months, then this is what the pay is going to be. If you're meeting every month, then this is what it's going to be. Right? And if you have decision-making ability, then this is what that looks like. And so we create a system, that's my opinion, that we create an equitable system across the board.
I agree.
I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've, now, this is my fourth term as a school committee man, and three years as a city councilor. And I obviously would never, ever support something like this. It's a hundred percent increase, but Mayor, I mean, if you want to put together some kind of panel or committee, of whether it's school committee members, city council members, or people in the community, that's fine. But as far as this goes tonight, I have no interest in accepting a hundred percent.
I mean, we can go over this all night.
Thank you.
I say Deb, call the roll, Mr. Aguirre?
What are we exactly voting on?
If anybody else wants to vote.
We're voting on, no, no, no. We're not voting.
The, 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 the city council wants to simply know if we support Mr. Aguirre's letter. The raises, and the boards, and what we do later can come out. They simply want to know if we support, made in the letters referred to the council committee, with the request that the letter be sent to the body for their input on the matter. That's it. Whatever your input is, yes or no, that's fine. And as Mr. Aguirre said, we have no jurisdiction over this, so they'll come up-
Input is not yes or no.
Right.
So why, and when I read that, I hear, they want our input. I just gave my input.
Okay, you gave yours, Sarah gave yours.
No, but you gave yours, Sarah gave hers, Mr. Hart gave hers. If everybody just weighs in and says what we think, if we want to talk about it, but there shouldn't be a vote, because there don't, there's no need for a vote.
Yeah, but a vote can also be a hand raising, so they know what we're talking about.
Yeah, well-
Not, don't have to be afraid of anybody having a say.
I don't care whether they have a say, I just want to have input.
So, right now, I mean, my feelings are, I'm not, I don't want to go a hundred percent right now. I am in full support of moving forward to clean this up. So, right now, I, it, if we had to vote, I would, I would say no, but if we had to vote, I would say yes, to move it forward and fix it. Just, and support what Sarah said. So there's equity across the board.
Ms. Pereira?
So I would say, that I, I, I guess I'm leaning toward what, you know, my mindset and Sarah's seem to be the same here, in terms of, yes, I think there should be compensation that is equal related to work that we do. So my only question is, and, and again, it's hard to say, how much time do, you know, other city councilors spend watching subcommittee meetings they can't attend? How many, I mean, that's all vague, we don't know. What we do know is how many meetings people go to, how many committees they have to be on, and that. So I guess we would go by that. So I definitely would, I would support us getting, by us, I mean, not us, the, the future school committee, having a pay that is, that is equal to the work they're doing. So if I'm looking at, okay, this body meets once a month, the city council meets twice a month, you know, this body, we're all to one committee, subcommittee, so are they, we have finance meetings, so do they. So, I mean, do I think we should be getting, and also, we're dealing with the population of the school district, right? Which, you know, don't get me wrong, my phone blows, you know, can be, can ring off the hook on days, but nothing like, nothing like if I was on the city council. I can, I can guarantee you that. So, you know, which is, which is fine, which is why, you know, I'm here. You know, this is what I choose to do, because I'm passionate about it, and like everybody is saying here, it really doesn't matter if the pay is equal or not. If you're on the school committee, it's because you're passionate about our, our students, you're passionate about our educators and our, and our school district. But the school district is one portion. If you're a city councilor, you're answering to a bigger budget, and a bigger proximity and amount of people, in my opinion. So do I think we should at least be getting half of what they get? Yeah, I think the school committee should be getting paid at least half of what, you know, the city council salary brings in. And, you know, I've been doing this job for a little over a year now, so, I mean, I think that's, I think that's fair to say, that whoever's here next year should, and, and again, you kind of, in, I don't, there, there are towns, like you said, who don't pay at all, which boggles my mind. Because you're not gonna get qualified people who are gonna take their time, put their name out there publicly, take time from their family, dedicate time to their community. You're not gonna find a whole lot of viable options if you're not providing any kind of compensation for hard work. So I, I agree with, with Mr. Aguirre, in terms of that. I just don't know if I can rationalize it in my head, an equal pay. But I think it's a conversation, you know, that the, the city council can have. Certainly, I think we should, you know, certainly I think the, the school committee should, should be compensated at least half. That'd be my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
For me personally, I agree with Ms. Roderick for saying, when I, when I joined the school committee, I didn't even know we got paid, to be completely honest with you. So for me, I just think it's a bigger conversation, and personally, I'm not comfortable having it right now, just being on the, the committee for a year. You know, Mr. Aguirre's been on the committee for much longer than I have, so when we talk about tier systems, or, you know, pay, or, or something like that, he can speak to it a lot better than I can. But I definitely think this is a conversation, for me personally, that I'm not comfortable having, it's something that, you know, maybe we had in the future, or something like that. That's just, that's just my opinion on things, but.
Okay. Ms. Larve?
Mr. Mayor, do you think, you don't think we need a roll call to be on official record?
Well, again, if you look at it, I would say, I, I don't want to speak for anybody. So I, I mean, I have no problem, it, it's not even a real roll call, it's just an unofficial-
Well, it'd be a roll call to proceed.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my opinion.
Mr. Aguirre, I'm sorry, give your hand. No problem. So the reason why I say there's no roll call needed is because I think everyone weighed in. And what they asked for at the council, I watched the council meeting. Typically, what happens is they get a, a letter from anyone, they put it and place it on file, and the councilor would look it up, they'd make an ordinance, a request to send it to the ordinance committee. They didn't go through that process, and that's why I was, like, people were scrambling, oh, it's a hundred percent, oh, it's this, what's that? I was hearing all the arguments. Most of them I didn't agree with. But at the same time, I wasn't even there at that meeting, because I didn't know that it was, they were gonna bring it up, so I would be at the ordinance committee. We, all we, they asked us as far as input. So I don't think, putting people on notice here to say, well, I don't, I agree with some of what Kevin said, but maybe not a hundred percent, maybe, that we haven't even made the argument for what is and why. So why are we gonna say no? But with that being said, I just want everybody to know, I watched the meeting, and when people are saying, and other members of this committee have said the same thing, oh, I can't, we're negotiating with contracts, two percent, three percent, we can't give this kind of percentage, we can't give this kind of percentage. But I want people to understand, if you do your research, and you realize that this committee voted to give a forty-eight percent raise to coaches in one season every year, forty-eight percent, forty-two hundred dollars, or thirty-eight hundred dollars. They deserved it, but at the same time, we voted for that. So if we're gonna say in one breath, we support a contract that gives a forty-eight percent, or thirty-eight percent, for one season of coaching, that's ten weeks, why would we not give the amount of money that we should get as school committee? Because we work just as hard as a coach, and I'm not demeaning coaches, I was a coach and I support them. But we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth here. We've given raises that are thousands of dollars to people that deserve it. Why would we not do that to ourselves, to at least have a look at it? So instead of saying, oh, we only give two percent to, to unions, I don't think that's a good argument at all. And I firmly don't believe that there's, there needs to be a vote. The ordinance committee, as Sean Cadema's chairman, is gonna take this issue up, and they're gonna address it. And at that time, anybody wants to go, go to the council and make your, your voice heard then. With that, I yield.
Well, we went back and forth, so we'll make sure that, I mean, I, I, the last line says, until the school committee's input is received. I think the input can be, you know, if they want to watch the meeting tonight, I, I, I thought if we told them that it was X to X, and we want to go forward with a panel to take care of it, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight with everybody, I think we got everybody's opinion, so we'll let it rip. Next item up. It's Health First, as presented by Paul Coogan. I may call on Mr. Pacico to help with this a little bit. This is the update. Health First is one of our community health partners. They want space up near the parent center with the disconnection of the old ramp from what was the Nagel Auditorium building to the original Durfee, no longer there. There is some empty space along the wall, not per se in the auditorium, where Health First would like to put up a, a school health center. Mr. Pacheco, I hope he corrects me, immunizations, health checks, kids that are being enrolled in our school system can be processed right there, working with our school nurses. We'll have a place in the building where parents can come to get medical help with an issue. They asked to partner with us. What we're looking for right now is a small spot in the existing parent center, which has already been renovated, a temporary spot, with the hope that as the city and the schools look at things, we find a way to go down that hall. If you picture it as you come down the old ramp, you take a right, you're going to go down towards what was the biology room, towards the woodworking room. There's a room in the far corner, and there's a long room that we'll talk about in a minute. Health First would like to set up a school health center in there to help us monitor the health of our kids, have a dental setup in there. There's a lot of things they want to do, we had a meeting with them. But right now, I would think this is just an update on trying to find them a temporary spot in the parent center that exists now until we are able to renovate the area they want.
Point of clarification.
I'm sorry.
Can I make a point of clarification? A question of clarification?
Just one second.
Sure.
Just so we know, we're moving on this because we did get a grant from the state that, that went to Health First to set up a school center. I don't know if it was one year or two year, but we're trying to incorporate that money into our renovations going forward. Mr. Aguirre.
Just a clarification of, or question on, we have received nothing in the agenda today on this, we haven't received nothing on this at all. So, I would like to find out what we, what role did the school committee have before? What role are we going to have now? And, and I think we, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but I have no information even from before. So, I think a, some sort of backup, and maybe table this till next month because we don't have any information.
We voted already to approve this, Mr. Aguirre.
But, but how long ago? All the people that are on here now have never even heard of it.
I've, this says update, and I, this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, we, we voted for this, and all it is, is an update on our plans moving forward. There's really, I don't believe much has changed. We did have a meeting with Health First, and this was, this was all a discussion point like we're having right now, but I gotta believe that's about where we are. Am I wrong, Mr. Pacheco?
I, I'd like to remember the date, but I want to say it's been at least a minimum of a year.
Yep.
If not longer, that the committee voted to entertain this process, but the process hasn't moved.
Yep.
So, the process has not really moved an inch since the school committee voted on it. And again, it is a grand opportunity that Health First received to, in some, in some districts, this is within the building. So, this is a high school component, it's, it's in the high school in, in certain communities. So, this would be to help out with the pace and it, and its process of immunizations and checkups for students who do not have a physician to go to. And then it's also a situation of sick kids in, in the high school that may not have a physician to go to, that could be looked at immediate, immediately without setting up an appointment. That's about the.
Yeah, and again.
The biggest that I have for an explanation.
I think Mr. Aguirre is right, this, this hasn't been in front of us for a while. I think this hit us just maybe pre-COVID, because we were going to move on this sooner, and then everything got ground to a halt. They came back to us, I want to say we've had one tour and one meeting. We're not there yet, but this is, this is an update. If anybody wants more, then we can get you whatever we got from them, but it's going to be, if, if we end up deciding that's the best way to go, we'll give them a corner of the building. But right now, they're looking for a temporary spot to do some work in the pace. Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, the only reason why I'm asking, and I do think this is something to explore, but what we're talking about here is we don't have any information. So, if anything's going to go on the agenda, it should be, here's the update, on such and such a day in 2020, the committee voted for X. We look to explore Health First. We never talked about going in the parent center on the left side, the right side, this or that, but that's a school committee decision on, once we vote on something like that. We have a role to play. So, all I was asking for is we should get the information and know what our role is so we can decide. Like, that building, it still belongs to the school committee. So, nobody should be taking tours, nobody should be offering space in that building without the school committee knowing. That's a respect to the school committee, in my opinion. But if we could just get some info, we might know, maybe we could have some input on it. That would be a great thing.
Yeah, this is just an update, as I said. Mr. Aguirre, this is just an update, and when we get more hard facts, we'll make sure you get them. We're not there yet, what do you got, Ms.?
I was going to say, in June, on June 14th, 2021, the committee voted to approve a partnership between Fall Republic Schools and Health First to provide basic health and dental services for students at the Fall Republic Schools, and provide a, you know, location within the Nagel building for these services.
Yeah, so, we haven't, we haven't moved since then, I mean, again, we got whacked a little bit, and we're just in the stage of trying to put it together. But I thought we had voted, but I wasn't even sure.
They did.
Ms. Rogers? Okay.
You certainly could have voted, clearly you did, but if there's an update, I'm, I want to hear the update, but if, if someone could forward that information to the rest of us, because you have three new people here who don't have that information.
Okay.
And so, we don't know anything, any of the background info.
Valid, valid point, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if I could get that information, it'd be nice to know what the program entails.
We'll get your copy of the old.
I mean, we have a school nurse to take care of sick kids. So, is this like dental appointments they're going to squeeze in while they're in school and things like that?
Again, from the brief conversations that have been had.
Okay.
Yeah. It is, dental is a component.
Okay.
Um, and it's, I don't want to say it's all of the services that are probably handled on Quarry Street at their main location.
Right, sure.
But this is an onsite, I think the grant, the grant is written that way, although it's not our grant, I think it was written that way that it would be located at a high school, at the high school.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be interesting to learn more about it, sounds good, but yeah, I don't have any information, so it'd be nice to catch up.
Could we get somebody to give us info on the grant? Could somebody from Health First, like, who wrote the grant? Was it Health First's grant? Was it our grant?
Mike Rogers, Mike Rogers wrote it for Health First.
Okay, so if we could get info on that.
What it's used as for, what is it designed for?
Yeah.
All right, fairly, very valid. Update, potential use of the old Nagel Auditorium for the Emergency Management Service as presented by Mayor Paul Coogan. Again, this one will be very sketchy. What they wanted to do, when you know how it sits down there, you have that old woodworking shop in the corner, the dead wall against what was facing the old building, we want to start a new vocational program. I think we did send in a preliminary letter, not even sure of that.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, we're waiting on that, for public safety. We would like Durfee kids to be involved in a public safety program, which will prepare them for police, fire, get them a certification as an EMT, and use it in our existing vocational shops. EMS would be one of our partners in that. They would locate in that space so that they could run adult classes at night to get people certified as EMTs, and help our firemen get, I think there's another classification of medics that the fire department wants. This is another area, which is now a dead portion of the, it's not in the auditorium, it's down from the auditorium towards the old woodworking area. That would be something that we're trying to explore to maximize use of that building. If we did this, there is the potential for some EM, FEMA and MEMA money to build a generator in there, which would take care of the whole building, to do some upgrades, and that would also open up use of some of the city's money to help with, we have a major roof problem up there. These are all ideas we're kicking around with ways to fix the auditorium up. As far as the actual performance center where the seats are and the stage are, that will not, that won't be touched. We have some people that want to use the, one of the practice rooms, but these, again, are all preliminary plans that are not solidified yet. This is simply an update on potential use of that area, which would then, I believe, help the kids in the city of Fall River to want to go down that path, and some adults that may want to be career changers. Again, having EMTs there, training at night would not be a negative for our city or for the, or for the EMTs. That's where we stand on that one, we're not there yet either. It's dead space, it's not being used right now, Ms. Larve.
Yeah, so is, has there been an official proposal from EMT, nothing?
No, no, nothing in writing, I haven't, I haven't seen anything in writing. Have you, Mr. Pacheco? No. It's just kicking stuff around, we're trying to keep you around for the kick.
Okay, I yield.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything in writing yet, it's, it's just an idea. The only idea that I did want to try to pursue was the vocational program for the Durfee kids and finding a way to piggyback that with the EMTs, because New Bedford Voc has a vocational program in public safety, and I think anything we can do to attract people into our police, fire, EMT is a positive. And again, give them something hands-on that they can use. But again, I have seen nothing in writing, we did take a walkthrough with the EMTs, and that's where that was. Sarah.
So, could we have someone present what it is that they're potentially looking for? Because it just feels odd to me to have an update on something, but then there's no concrete information to go on. I appreciate the info, and I think it is a really good idea, right, that we have a comparable program, but it just feels really odd to me to not have any background information or have folks here to be able to answer questions or for us to even entertain things. You know, like, we're saying that we, we don't even have anything in writing from these folks, and we're kind of talking about two separate issues. We're talking about in a program, getting these kids trained and adding to our vocational program and having EMS come in. So, I think we're talking about two separate things. So, it just, I guess I need clarification. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I need clarification on those cases.
Again, I don't think anything, I kind of agree with you, Sarah, I know, but.
I'd like to forget it until we bring it up again.
Yeah, no, we, we, this is, this is how you live when you're, when you're the mayor, people come to you with something and say, wouldn't this be a great idea? Okay, come back to me, and we try to move it along, and that's where we are.
And, and so then I'm just reiterating that point.
Same thing.
Like, that's great, but before it even gets to this point, if, it can't come on the agenda until we have information.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, just, I agree with Ms. Rogers, but the, the thing that I have a problem with is that the school committee, the building belongs to the school committee still. So, I have a problem when things are being discussed that the committee has never been aware of, such as EMS walking through the building, trying to find space, trying to look at space. We knew nothing of that. We knew nothing of that as a school committee, and that building is still under the school committee's purview. So, that's the part that gets me of just, I think the missing step is, the superintendent could have said, okay, we're going to explore the following, give us some notice, so then she can go out and look, well, we might have started a vocational program or whatever it is. We weren't part of any of these discussions. So, it makes you wonder, well, what else is happening? Is there, are we going to have other adults there? Are we going to do that? All valid questions, but at the end of the day, we knew nothing of it. I can tell you, I knew nothing of it. That's part of the problem. Secondarily, when we have anything on the agenda, we require the superintendent to do a one-pager explaining what it is. And I would ask the mayor and any other member that, or anybody else that puts something, do the same process. Give us a one-pager, so if we had questions, we can ask them when the agenda comes out versus sitting here and we know nothing about this. We still haven't gotten any answers from, three months ago, something was on the agenda about a citizen input time, three months ago. Same theory, all I'm asking for is a one-pager, being fair to us, superintendent, and anybody else that puts things on the agenda. I yield.
Okay. Next item up, 13, for your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments. I'm looking for a motion a second to accept them all.
Motion to accept all?
Second it.
I have a motion a second, Mr. Aguirre.
Just had a question on, there was one, a, a, a utility worker that left, and I've always had a problem with the way that we're doing this utility worker thing, and Madam Superintendent, is it, if somebody's in a utility worker job, are they denied to come to an open custodian job?
I don't know, this is. Absolutely not.
So, if somebody, like, I don't know.
If a custodian, if, it's a two, it's two separate, it's two separate units of a bargaining unit. So, one, obviously, the cafeteria side and the nutrition side and the custodial side, but movement between those happens.
They're not prohibited, is my point.
It's not prohibited, it happens all the time.
This gentleman that left, it wasn't like he said, oh, I, I wanted to be a custodian, they wouldn't let me, so therefore I had to leave.
Yeah, the only, the only issue that would ever come up in any of those situations is, is seniority. But other than that, they can move freely.
And we have so many custodian openings.
Right, if they choose to go, if, yeah, if they choose to go into the custodial opening, they can.
Yep.
The salaries are the same, but they, they can choose the job, yes, absolutely.
I've already raised my concerns about the utility worker, but that was all I want. Thank you.
Now, could I get a, could I get a motion a second, Deb?
You do.
Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Larve? Yes. Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aguirre.
I, I had received an email this morning, this afternoon, I forwarded it to the superintendent about a transportation issue. I don't know if there was any update on it. What happened is, the parent was concerned that the bus, they wouldn't allow a child on the bus, and they had to walk several miles home. So, the parent had indicated she was going to try to come to the meeting, obviously she couldn't, but if we could just get an update on that, if possible, if not, we could always follow up by email.
I, I will follow up by email, I know that that happened last week, I believe. Mr. Pacheco and I both were on it, we spoke to Principal Davy, we actually communicated with the transportation company, made it clear that we can't just leave kids and not allow them to take the bus. So, we will reiterate and, and make some contacts again regarding that, absolutely.
Thank you, I yield.
Hearing nothing further. Is there a reason to go into executive session?
There would be, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to read those reasons for us, Mr.?
Sure. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session minutes for January 9, 2023, regular school committee meeting. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation with regards to Dawn Mederos individually and as PPA for Cole A. Mederos versus the City of Fall River Superior Court, Docket Number 2273, CV 00105, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall Administrator's Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government employees, including without limitation of power professionals, parent workers, and clerks of the Fall River School System that are paid from federal and state grants, and represented by the Fall River Public Schools, government programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2186, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at 2501 South Main Street, Fall River, Mass., as the chair has declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. National law is chapter 38, section 2182, to conduct strategy sections in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with[1683.27]